I'd call this meeting an order please. When everyone joins us and pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence. Thank you everyone. We would first of all like to thank everyone that came out for the board meetings this evening. And we especially want to thank all of those who brought our food that we've gotten. We talked about this about a week or two. Well, we're going to Harts here on the hay. We know we'll eat lots when we get up there. And you didn't disappoint us. And Richie made sure that you dumped them from here. Everybody's done a great job, so we sure appreciate that. Wherever we go, they're gracious enough to give us some nourishment. And this is one place that never... They do a good job. And this is also Mrs. Smith, Carol Smith's birthday. So in case anybody didn't know that, I'm not going to say any more than that. It's what she wishes. But let me start first by just identifying the members of the board that are with us tonight and the administrative staff. Carol Smith, if you know us, one of our board members. My name is Steve Priestley. This is Jeff McKit, Jeff's our superintendent of schools here in Lincoln County. Ray Currie, Ray's the vice president of the Board of Education. And on the end is Larry Wilkerson. I think most of you know us, but for those that don't. Also in attendance, we have Bill Limble, there, that gentleman on the end with the marine haircut. Bill's the assistant superintendent of schools. Beside him, we have a lady that you may know, Zouche McCann. She's the executive secretary now. She's been looking forward to this too. She goes, "I haven't visited one of those Harts yet." I said, "Well, you'll find out soon." Beside him is Ray Ellis. Ray is our treasurer for Board of Education. And beside Ray, who's trying to hide, is Greg Cosney. He's the main district director of the Board of Education. Also part of our traveling group is unofficial member Sean Donahue of Lincoln County. Like we always say, Sean travels with us. He just doesn't get paid or anything. At least not by us.
Not enough.
Hopefully someone pays him something. But he does. Oh, I'm sorry. I can only identify those I can see. Rowley Baker isn't with us tonight in body form. He is on that phone though. He's in the Charlotte Airport. Rowley's been on business in Texas and he's made it to Charlotte so far. He had hoped to be here tonight. And originally his plans would have had him here, but you know how that goes with your clients. So at least he's gotten to Charlotte. He's getting a little bit closer. And eventually he'll make it back home. Rowley Baker is with us tonight on the phone. I forgot to dial up. Okay. A little better. Let's approve the minutes then of the October 30th, 2018 regular meeting. Have the motion that affected Mr. Wilkinson made the motion and Ms. Smith seconded that. Is that a long guess though?
Yes, yes.
Just run to the public comments section now in front of Tuesday head there. Just for your information, all Board of Education meetings, anyone may come and speak at a board meeting. And all you need to do in order to do that is just come before the meeting and sign that pink sheet of paper. And should anyone have signed it, I assume no one has. But had there been... Good job, Miss Riley. It took Mr. Limble, you know, a time or two to make sure you put that "sir" on there. So he's really... No, we'd like to tease Ray. But anyway, if anyone does want to address the board, all you have to do is sign that and they will bring that up and then I will identify who the person is and what they want to speak about. Now, when you do that, the only negative part of that is we can't interact with you. But you can speak, say whatever you want to say, and we can certainly listen and they act on it later today. But we won't have any interaction with you because we're not allowed to per the meetings law here in West Virginia. But if you actually want to be on our board agenda where we can interact with you, you just need to contact Mrs. McCann by the prior Wednesday of a typical board meeting that is on Tuesdays. And if you'll let her know that prior to that time, then you can actually be on the board's agenda. And if you're on the agenda, you can have interaction with whatever's on your mind. We can talk and do all those kinds of things. So that's true of any board meeting that we have. Now, tonight we were doing a couple of things. We're under presentations and reports. Our first item will be the LSIC presentation from Harts PKA. Now, for those of you that don't know, every school in West Virginia is required to have a school improvement council, the local school improvement council. And like at all schools here at Harts, you all have one. And the law also requires that annually each LSIC must present to the Board of Education its plan and allow the board the opportunity to discuss and ask questions and things like that. So that's... We've traveled throughout the county and this is our last school we've gone to. We don't go to all schools after here tonight, meeting that annual requirement. But it gives us the opportunity, one, to not only hear what you have to say and all, but we get to visit with you. We get to see your school. There are issues or concerns that people want to point out too sometimes that are visible like we're able to see. And they're able to do that too. But probably above all else, it affords the citizens in that area the opportunity to come and attend a board meeting without having to travel to Hamlet or whatever, particularly when you're further away. And you can take a chance on it and see how it works. And sometimes they make up things they want to discuss. Anyway, that's what we're going to do tonight. The first item I'd like to say will be Mr. Mathis, the principal here at Harts. He just wanted to give us the LSIC report for Harts PKA. Good math.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all coming tonight and again, thank you for the food. Absolutely wonderful. We had our Veterans Day celebration today, so I've been subjected to that type of meal twice today. And it's been wonderful both times. As far as our school improvement and what we have discussed with our LSIC and the things that we have going on, I have no use of technology with you tonight. I'm going to have a conversation with you and share with you face to face some of the things that we're working on. First of all, I'd like to say, and I think I mentioned this last year, and I repeat it with even more confidence now, I've been principal in six different schools. And beyond a shadow of a doubt, the staff at this school is the best that I have ever worked with. They are creative. They are cooperative. We have the tightest family atmosphere among our staff and our school than any that I have ever witnessed. And as far as the improvement process, this staff has really done a lot of work towards school improvement. Matter of fact, we have, the past two days, we've had leader in me activities here at school. And yesterday, we had a principal training with the leader in me. And then today, they had the lighthouse coordinator, which ours is Carrie Bates. And she has worked herself to death the past couple of days getting all of this ready. And I want to applaud her and thank her. As a matter of fact, they're even probably going to try to steal her with employment and we've threatened their lives. So they can't have her. They can't have her. Mr. McCann said amen, I believe. But everyone is impressed with her. I'm thoroughly impressed with her. And today, the lighthouse coordinators throughout the county and actually other counties were here as well. And what impressed me most when Ms. Bates talked to me about the results of the meeting, we had actually some former teachers that were in attendance today that are now working at other schools. And they said that they could clearly see in this school a transformation. And that makes me very proud. And that again reiterates what I'm telling you, that we have a wonderful, outstanding staff right now. I'd like to thank you for hiring Ms. Kim Blair as assistant principal here. She is at Glade Springs, she's new principal training. And she would much rather be here, I promise you. But she's doing an outstanding job and she's going to be a wonderful administrator. She already is. But in years to come, she has a bright future ahead of her. She's an outstanding young lady. I have a lot of confidence in her. As far as the school improvement process, I've been principal in six different schools. This is the fourth school that I have been in that has been identified by the state. And back in the old days, I thank God they don't use the terms like this anymore, but you remember the seriously impaired days? I was fortunate, and I do say fortunate, to be principal in two schools that were seriously impaired. And all three of the prior schools that I've been in, we have come through the process and we have been successful. And we went off the state's radar because of the improvements that were made in those three schools. I am more confident that this school will show improvement and show more growth than any of the other schools out there. And I have no doubt about that. Some of the things that we have going on, I mentioned these to you last year, and I think even when I was at high school, I talked to you about our math process. We went into great detail about that. We teach mathematics to mastery. And it is a meticulous process that the teachers design lessons based upon assessments within the classroom. And they gauge the instruction to fit where the students are with their skill levels. And they must show mastery with those skills before they move on. So in math, we no longer teach an inch deep, a mile wide. We go deeper into the deeper thinking math skills. And we have seen progress and we have seen promise. We also have started and are implementing even further this year, the Kansas writing process, which is basically a process that teaches a process of writing that is concrete. And we have a K through eight system for that here at Harts. And each grade level is responsible for certain skills within writing. And we've seen wonderful growth. Third grade, we saw wonderful growth. I mentioned the math process. We had the highest growth within the county with our fifth grade math scores last year. We've seen phenomenal growth and I think we're going to continue to see it. We're doing something a little differently now since we've been identified by the state in this process. There's a lot of different ways that you can address skill education with kids. We're trying to address all of them. This first nine weeks, what we have done was we have identified those students who were our lowest performing. And those students who were our lowest performing, within six through eight, we have an extra period during the day called flex period. And we have been giving them extra math and extra English, language arts instruction within our flex period with the middle school students. They address that differently in the elementary levels because we do not have that flex period within the elementary. However, during the day, we have skill groups that rotate within each of those classrooms. And we use our Title I teachers and we use our interventionists to come into the classroom and help separate and identify the different skill needs with those students for a period of time during the day. So those students who have the lowest skills are being addressed. Those students who are in the middle are being addressed. And then those high flyers are being addressed as well. And one of the saddest things that I think I've seen in my several years in education is we tend to never focus on our highest flyers. And our highest flyers do not get the attention that they deserve or they need. And we're addressing that as well. As a matter of fact, at the middle school level, this next nine weeks, we're going to begin this process monthly, we have also identified what we call our bubble kids. Now, these are the students who are strategically placed within instruction because they have been identified through the state assessment and our other assessments that we use here at the school. They are at the cusp of making mastery as identified by the state. So what I mean by that, if they would answer three or four more questions correctly on the state assessment, they would be counted as proficient. And we've identified every single one of those students. And we have identified every single one of the skills that they need within math and reading language arts. And we are going to be addressing that during that 30-minute period for the next nine weeks with those students who have been identified as bubble kids. I've already discussed this plan with the State Department and he was enthused about it. And they're going to be coming actually next Wednesday for a visit with us, and I'm looking forward to that. I think we're going to have a good working relationship with them. He reminds me a great deal of the young man that the state assigned to us when I was at Lincoln County High School and we were able to show phenomenal growth while I was there. And they were very helpful and I'm looking forward to that relationship with this young man that they've assigned to us. And then right before testing, we have already identified our highest flyers at the sixth through eighth grade level. Those students are going to be getting specific instruction so that they would even be able to go higher on the state assessment, but also have some instruction and do some activities that they find enjoyable and enriching. So that is basically our plan that we're working on, that we're turning over to the State Department and they're coming to visit and view next week. I want to also applaud those teachers who work for the after-school program. We have a unique situation here at Harts. We have, of course, within Lincoln County, Lincoln County has close to the highest, if not the highest, number of students who have been identified within the homeless category, which doesn't mean that they don't have a roof over their head, but it means that they are not being raised by their parents. They may be doubled up in situations. We have the highest percentage within Lincoln County here at Harts. As a matter of fact, over a third of our students have been identified as being within the homeless category. Our after-school program, which means close to 127 kids within this cell, 378, 72. So we are addressing through the after-school program and we're extending our instructional day and some fun activities for a couple of hours every day for those kids to have an environment that is enriching and inviting and safe and productive. And they can be in an environment for a couple more hours a day that offers them the opportunity to have fun, to be in an environment that they're loved and that they know that they're safe and that they can receive a meal. And they can be with teachers in smaller groups and work within those groups to do not only homework and skill activities within academics, but they can also have some fun time as well. And we're very thankful to have that program again this year. I think it's going to give great results. And you see, as a matter of fact, we had a bus that was late and you all got to see a few of those kids here this evening. And I thought we were getting ready to feed them again, but that would have been fine too. But whatever we need to do, we'll do. But another thing that I want to discuss with you is the leader in me process. And Ms. Bates has worked tirelessly leading this within this school. She has taken the lead with this and we have an assembly every morning at the beginning of the day. Our kids come into the gym and we're in there as a family, as a group. And we have activities at the very first thing in the morning and she leads that every single day with our entire staff and our entire student body. And basically, what I see as the plus about the leader in me, when I was a child in the late 60s and 70s, life was different then as a child. The family structure was different. We had a system that I received help and I received love and I received confirmation from my pastors, from my coaches in baseball and football and athletics and scouting. Well, unfortunately, we see that there's not as many activities for kids today. The activities are there, but the family structure is such that for some reason, they're just not participating in those activities. So our kids are losing a lot of the things that you and I had, growing up in communities that cared and cared for their kids. And one thing that the leader in me process has done is we're addressing simple things like putting first things first, creating a win-win situation to where both individuals in a situation will win and not you will have one win and one lose. Or a lot of times when you try to have one win and one lose, you'll have two lose. We try to do things together as a group and as a team. Our students today, I didn't speak at the Veterans Day ceremony. I didn't even welcome anyone, our students today. It was completely student-led and student-run and it was a remarkable day. And I'm very, very proud of our kids and what they did. That type of stuff would not be possible without the leader in me process. And I applaud you for allowing the county to do that. And I think we're going to see great results with our students. We have students today that are really living in trauma. And we see it every single day. And one thing that we've learned, students who are living in trauma, and that means when they don't know if they're going to be in this home or this home next week. The drug epidemic has destroyed so many families and so many homes and so many communities. We have kids who are coming to school literally hurting. We see it every day. And that is completely different than it was when I began in education nearly 30 years ago. It's a different world today. You see it. But when kids are traumatized and they come to us hurting, they're not going to learn. Because we've learned through science that the only portion of the brain that is properly working when students are in trauma is the brain stem. The thinking portion of the brain is not even engaged. It's the brain stem. They're in survival mode. They're not going to learn reading, writing, handwriting, etc. So the leader in me process, our after-school program, our teachers are communicating with each other when we know that a family is hurting, kids are hurting. We try to undergird them and love them. And I've never seen a school come together like this one in my life and provide that loving environment, caring environment for our students. And we've seen kids that were not learning after they received the love and the admiration and the support of their teachers and the entire school, we're seeing those kids starting to grow and start to prosper. And if we don't put that first, we're all going to be in a world of hurt. Because our students are our leaders of tomorrow. So we embrace that process. We're looking forward to working with our kids in the future. And I thank you for the opportunity to talk with you. Do you have any questions for us?
If you can do us your great classes, this break, are your classes self-contained or departmentalized? Different grade levels?
Of course, at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade levels, we are departmentalized. They have separate instruction from English teachers, math teachers, science teachers, and social studies teachers. We have two periods devoted to English, language arts, two periods devoted to math. And then we have a period devoted to science and a period devoted to social studies. And then they are within art, PE, music, and Spanish and other programs such as that. But now our pre-K, pre-K through two are self-contained. They are within the same classroom, receiving instruction from that one teacher. Our three, four, and five, they're with one teacher for reading, language arts, and social studies. And they are with another teacher for math and science. So we have departmentalized for our third, fourth, and fifth grade students.
Man, your interventionists, what grade levels does that person work with?
Our interventionists work basically with our primary grades. Because we try to put as much emphasis as we can within those primary grades because if we don't get them where they need to be by third grade, we will never get them where they need to be. So we put a great emphasis on reading skills and math skills with our regular teachers, also our Title I teachers, and our interventions within those primary grades. However, we do also work with our fourth grade and our fifth grade as well. We hope to be able to possibly in the future, we've been looking with the money that the state has provided us with the extra help, if we could get a math intervention with our Title I funds, we would like to plug that person in to our fifth grade up so that those students can receive more math instruction. Because what happens to math, when you get past the fourth grade, the math skills widen and deepen. And we take students, we literally in the eighth grade, in the eighth grade now, they're doing linear equations today and they used to, they didn't get any of that until they got further along. So we're trying to use those interventionists right now at the primary grades. We have to try to get the most bang for our buck. I hate to use that term, but if we don't get them where they need to be by the third grade, we may never catch them up. So we're also playing a game, trying to plug those holes and fill those gaps of those upper grades as well as we can.
And your title teachers?
Yes, we have two Title I teachers and then we have one interventionist that is half-time.
Do they all use the same manner?
Yes, yes, they are. They go into the classrooms and also do some outside of the classroom instruction by fooling kids. We need the... To shore up those basic skills at the primary level.
So they work in conjunction with the regular teachers?
Oh, absolutely, they do. Yes, sir. What we do, our Title I teachers actually go into the classrooms as well. And we do some separate groupings within the classroom. And we'll have students who are working at different levels for a period of the day. Like we may have three different reading groups within a kindergarten or first grade classroom. And within kindergarten, you also have an aide. So an instructional aide is working with one group, the Title I teacher will be working with one group, and the regular teacher will be working with another group with students at different levels.
One thing you said there earlier that I appreciate, testing. The idea of testing has become a negative thing almost every quarter, probably for good reason because I'm not sure the purpose of the testing has changed over the years. But you said something there that got my attention. Testing to me many years ago, was the purpose of testing was to see where a kid is weak.
Yes, sir.
So that I would be able to, I was a teacher that got that kid, that student, what to work on. And that's what you said a moment ago.
That's why we still do witnesses.
Student witnesses. And you knew to focus on those. You also knew their strengths, which...
Yes, sir.
But unfortunately, it seems like as much as testing has gone away from that, more of how we're going to judge this school versus this school or whatever my business. That's always been a little concern that I've had, is that the real purpose of testing should be to define by a weak area, to say, you know what to work on.
Yes, sir.
And you said that and I liked it.
That's my philosophy.
Yeah. It's not just that be seriously or almost compare or agree. Could you identify members of your staff or your LSIC members for us?
Absolutely. Matter of fact, most of the ones that are here are also members of our LSIC. We have Mr. Reggie McCann, he works within special education at the middle school level. We have Ms. Carrie Bates, she is English, language arts at the middle school level. Michelle Smith, she is first grade teacher. Kathy Smith, she's a second grade teacher. Excuse me, I'm your first grade teacher. I got it mixed up. And then we have Kathy Thompson, she teaches at the third grade level. She teaches math and science. And we have, in the back, we have Kristy Rowe. She teaches reading, language arts, and social studies at the fifth grade level. And we have Shayla Richard, who teaches math and science at the fifth grade level. Jackie McCann, she teaches third grade, reading, language arts, and social studies. And Ms. Judy Allen, she teaches reading. Basically, they're all from our LSIC.
We appreciate all of you serving in that capacity. Many times you have to go beyond the norm. The fact that you're here tonight just reinforces that very idea. So we thank you for what you did. Mr. Mathis can't do this job without you all. And also everybody else that's here. We appreciate you being here. Okay. If we have nothing further, we appreciate your time and to the fact that you've invited us here. We'll be back.
Good. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Our next presentation and the second one, the only other one we have. Now, any of you all that were going to eat or something, feel free to do so. If you have to go somewhere, something will affect us. But our next presentation, Mr. Cosney for our panel. You might have to come behind that curtain. But we have Greg Cosney, who's like I said before, he's our maintenance director. And tonight we're having a presentation here, and I don't know if you want to handle this great, but most of us on the board, we know...
I want briefly, and then I'll let Mr. Burks.
I just like to... We know Mr. Burks. We have seen him, Dave Burks with GMM. For those of you who don't know, he's the gentleman on the end there. And then Mike White, you're also with GMM. Is that correct? Okay. And then Kathy Patel, did I pronounce your name correctly? Okay. And you're with American Geotag.
That's correct.
Okay. So you're really officially with those guys. You're kind of helping out. But they're here tonight, and Mr. Cosney will get into this, but they're going to discuss some issues at Duvall PKA.
Right. Well, we felt about it, we had Michael late. Last time we had this conference, he was very...
We wanted him here.
Yeah. So while we're looking at Duvall, we usually start out, I contacted Michael, who's structural engineer from GMM. Now, we looked at Duvall, we looked at some issues that we're having. We've done some monitoring, we decided what we need to monitor. So we've been doing three months of monitoring currently. months of monitoring currently. So Michael and I met there several times at the building noticing things, doing things, there was a discussion where, are we watching more than we need to watch? So then we called in, Candy came in from American Geotech to look at the soil samples, the boring, and all these things that we're doing to see, get an idea of what the building's doing, and where we need to go from here.
That's what Mr. Ferguson. So you now?
It's up to me.
Well, it's my fault, these guys.
Mike is our structural engineer, Conti's the soil engineer, so what we basically summarized, I summarized this on the first sheet, we did a lot of exploration, we've done a lot of testing, a lot of measuring, we checked plumbness of walls, we checked floor leveling, we checked settlement, we drilled holes in the floor slab to see if there were voids, we checked several different things over a period of eighteen months. Our conclusion is, after all of this, we feel that the building's still safe, it's not, it's not unsafe for children, or for teachers, or anybody. It's still a safe building to occupy, but we, we feel that there's still a need to continue monitoring that building while it is moving slightly. All the structures intact, its bearing capacity, the bearing placements are fine, nothing's moved out, out there off-bearing or anything like that. But we still, we still feel that we should continue to monitor that structure, but over a period of time, it's going to continue to move. But right now, it's just moving extremely slow. And a lot of that has to do with, over the years, that area's flooded in, and the roof drains, some of those pipes underground may have, they're probably old, terracotta pipe or something just separated, and that water tends to dissipate, and then as, as it moves underground, it takes dirt with it and moves it along, so it creates voids. That's what causes a lot of the movement. And Conti can explain a lot of that, but basically what, what we, we feel that we still should continue to monitor some of those things, monitor the floor slab, monitor the wall, and then we'll work closely with you if you need contingency plans, if you've noticed the wall crack monitors that we have, maybe continue to monitor those and install more of those when need be, just to see how the cracks get bigger, if they move, another crack appears or something like that, you need to continue to monitor. But we feel the building right now is safe, and we shouldn't, shouldn't have to worry about it at this point.
Just for, I guess we all know this, and those that have access to the recording, as Dave mentioned there, this is not something that we haven't been aware of quite a while. So for the past year and a half or so, Mr. Gosney has been updating us on various things they began to do, prior to having you all come in to do some of the, so I wanted to go through this, summarize, not specifically, I'm just saying, do you want to go through here, see if there's different activities that happened in the past sixteen years? But I think we continue to pretty much, is to monitor that, but what we saw over a period of time was it just seemed to be a continued wave of something going on there, and that's why we had to worry, to be in that area, and that's kind of what we're prepared to do, certainly, not the time to mine, having the opportunity to hear the structural lead about this.
He's a soil engineer, his company drilled the holes in the slab, and tested the earth below the slab, and monitored that, and in the report, I gave each of your coffee, you should have our reports, you should have American Geotech's soil reports, as well as our field work, and all the data that we compiled during the time we monitored the cracks, and some picture of crack monitor as well.
We've gotten off that, we were, we've gotten the initial report earlier for our Geotech report, so we had, we've had it for a couple of weeks, we've had more opportunities to look at, but most of the other things we've gotten on are pretty much just advising us to pass testing and different things like that. Hope you, you watch that. Unless you all have questions, Mr. Currie.
When we're here. When you've been monitoring, has it been tested movement, or has it moved more, or last, what was it you did first for, or do you know?
The, what we've been monitoring, well, a couple of them, we put some crack monitors on the walls, and so those tracks move, if one side moves relative to the other, it should show. Those have been on there since February, and they, there's no reading on them at all, so the cracks have not gotten any worse. The other thing we're monitoring is the elevation of the floor, just relative to itself. And there's been very little movement on that, and each time we've read it, it's every three months, I mean, there's maybe an eighth of an inch, maybe here and there, relative to the previous readings. And so it's, it's movement, but it's very, very slow. And I think maybe, maybe the slab might be moving more or faster than the rest of the building, but it's, it's very little, very little movement.
So is that how we, you concluded that structurally it's safe in that campus school there?
Well, I guess ultimately, we determined that it's safe by just, I guess, observing the entire structure. The walls are not out of the wall, none of the bearing seats, the joists have come off. I mean, ultimately, if it's unsafe, there's, there's something that's not right, and you know, the building's moved, and it's not a hundred percent the way it should be, but it's not, there's nothing about it that's unsafe. Like I say, the joints are not coming out of the walls, the walls are not falling, so the structure is, is safe.
Kind of like at your house, if you have some foundation problem, you might have cracks.
Might have some cracks.
If you remember back when we replaced the windows at Hamlin, at the elementary school there, we got into that, one of those walls was actually about forty-six inches, and it's gone to break on several sides. There's nothing like that.
That got you at least. As far as the soil analysis, Dan, what can you share with us, what did your studies show?
We did three boarding into the slab, and we found that one of the boarding has a two-inch wide slab. And then we did some boarding on outside, and our evaluation is that we have a loss of soil is occurring below the slab at the foundation level. So water finds its way on top of the footer or grade beam and utility lines, and as water flows, takes the soil with it and past of the soil. So we are having, because a loss of soil is very, so piping, and then as soil gets washed away, your ground slab is a slab on grade, which continues to set. And those processes are a gradual process, they're not quick. They respond, when you have flood event, you might have no response, but in a normal condition, you have, it's a very slow gradual process. And based on my past experience, that is always have a telltale story, there is no such thing as this kind of process, it's called sudden collapse. Those are very unlikely. So you will have a lot of indications that slab is showing crack, the deflections, you know, and still it's trying to bridge over. So it's a very slow gradual process, you call a loss of soil, or piping of the soil below the slab at the utility. You have two or three utility that water flows out, we dig the test pit, and water pours out from the, from our building. So there is no foundation grain on this stuff, so it's just loss of soil is occurring at their slow rate.
Now, from our understanding, typically, and I don't know all the correct terminology, but there should be something going on with the building's peers, or?
There's either a foundation, or there are deep foundations, or there's spread footing, or there's some type of.
Now, what is, what is the issue, what is really, I don't know whether causing, but having a great impact on this school here, is that it's not firmly on bedrock or something?
It's like the foundation is there, and if the, if the earth moves beneath the foundation, it creates a void, so there's nothing for it to bear on, so the wall would settle with the slab or something. That's what causes the cracking, that's what causes the settlement or unevenness of the floor slab.
Well, had the school been built in an ideal method, this wouldn't have occurred because it would have been on a firm bedrock.
The caisson that on a part of the building they built, it is not extended to the bedrock, they terminated at thirty feet. The bedrock is at forty-six feet below the surface, and what they did, they did called bale caisson, that was in the seventies was predominant, they got the new concept, so the caisson in forty-four inches goes up there and widen at the bottom. And those caissons, they're not good for West Virginia because we have sandy soil, so when you try to build a caisson at thirty feet, and you rotate, well, sand does not wholly ship, it's collapsed. And still they were, so within the couple of years, those idea were completely moved out of the GCA because they were not practical, and causes a lot of problems because we have now, caisson is not being baled out because of the sand, it was not wholly shipped and keep collapsing, and still they pour the concrete, so you have shorter contact, so those caissons under high stress with the soil bearing capacity, so they continue to set for gradual settling.
In fact, in the nineteen seventies, that was an accepted way of.
Right, in those days, and eighties, those concepts were completely, because they were not working, because they were not practical enough field.
Whereas most nowadays, when you put deep foundations in, you take it all over the rock, or reduce them.
Right, we extend caisson, we start with a one-time diameter into the rock, so we confirm and go into the rock formation, and then pour the concrete, that is today's customary
Did I answer your question? I think so. Does anybody else have any questions in that area there? Greg, anything you want to interject here?
I think the consensus is we're going to continue to monitor, and I might work on the next three months. I think we have November, the next one's coming up, but this next, this next one will look.
Yeah, I mean, as we go on, you know, it's going to be more and more information you have, more, we can go back, and once you get an update, you can look back and say, you know what, this, this point is moving, this point is moving, and we have a.
I think that the school board and our party, even in the school itself, has a letter stating from, I think it's perfectly safe. No problem with the building, you know, get it, even get it into school.
And if somebody notices something, we can bark, we can bark down. But referring back to your report here, October twenty-second, Greg Gosney.
Right.
I know from the, from the last page of this report, you know, I guess you all looked at various corrective measures, things that might be done, and since you're actually reviewing the corrective options, stabilizing the wing to its present condition, that, that would be very difficult to do, and cost-wise?
Right, it will not be costly to do. Since the part of the building is sitting on a caisson, now you try to go either side and do, it would be very costly. And then try to solve the loss of soil that water is flowing six, seven feet. Try to solve that problem, we have to take it out the slab and the dirt, and redo the all utilities that we are going underneath the floor slab. So I thought that would be very costly, probably.
You're doing something like you're describing there, with the, the building itself remaining intact and you're just working underneath it?
You'd take out the first whole floor.
Say that again.
You'd be probably taking out all of the floor slabs, and reworking everything below the floor slab. And the building most likely stays intact, but you'd have to move everybody out somewhere else, and it'd take a long time to get all that.
Right. But being cost prohibitive, I think that's the terminology you used here. Dave, have you all kicked around, and I figured that some of this?
No, we did, no, it's just by, just by past experience on what we've done, taking smaller piers and trying to elevate parts of buildings, we know how expensive those things can be. But taking this on would be extremely expensive, just knowing what it would entail, not just the cost of jacking some of that up and correcting it, but the man-hours and labor would be very expensive.
Then, I guess, any other option, just demolish it?
You would be able to stop the caissons from settling, you're just going to fix the slab, you're not going to stop the building from settling.
Well, I'm talking about if it were totally eliminated, the wing was eliminated, and you build it in such a way that it goes to bedrock, the numbers there were a lot of zeros.
Yeah, exactly.
I kind of thought that was important, so. Are there any other things that you gentlemen, now, can you give us a good report here, and you, your suggestion that we recommend that we continue to monitor, and that's what Mr. Ferguson plans to do, are there any other things that you think we should know at this point?
I just, people look like we talked before, just keep monitoring the building, look for things that are new, if somebody kind of calls you, says there's a new crack, if you want to check out on some people, other than that, we'll keep, Michael, keep coming back whenever we have to.
Okay. Now, Dave, you were like, who is the author of this part here, where it concludes some recommendations? Okay, very fast, you gave it right back. Okay, but yeah, this is where you conclude that the building is structurally safe, and it's for continued student occupancy, and this, you know, you base it on that, and things you all've done. Now, however, you recommended several things. First of all, we continue to monitor, we talked about that, continue to monitor any wall cracks or continued movement, continue to monitor any movement in the floor slab, that is kind of what Michael said there too. Now, numbers three and four, work with the county to develop contingency plan for students if, if, and the big words if there, if significant movement occurs, and to work towards a long-range plan.
Well, on that, I mean, if you needed to take that wing, because students had occupied that wing somewhere else mechanically, we would, we would have to do a number of calculations, or help you get secure modulars or whatever, if we needed to put them on site, or how we wanted to handle that. And if a long-range plan, if your long-range plan is to keep those students intact somewhere, maybe not near that building, but if it bothers you over a period of time, but you do find out that it's continually moving, the board may want to investigate building, building sometime, we can come up with cost estimates to do that, and that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Mick, do you have any thoughts about any of those contingency records in general?
We've had lots of discussions, we've already settled the issue, I didn't realize it's been eighteen months, I disagree with that point, I don't think, really, it's been eighteen months. But, you know, I, I've had informal conversations with the SBA staff, I've shared with me that you had as well. I'm of the opinion that at this point, probably we should do something forward, write a letter to the SBA outlining what the results are.
Do you really make this report available to me?
Yes, yes, we include that, not wanting to do this, but that's one of the priorities that we need to be, I just think that's the next step. Obviously, I think we need to be planning, you know, long-term, what that may look like, that opens up big discussions that we'll have over that couple of months, and making that determination, you know, next, next September, I guess, is one of these projects.
I think they're going to start, I think the school building authority's goal is to start that process in January, we're going to receive a continued year plan, and that should be part of the continued year plan, I would think, if you want to go ahead.
I would think that if you want to go ahead this month or next month, get a letter to the SBA with your concerns, and I'll give you the, the report, give you the clue. Uh, I know they changed the rules about around the emergency money, so, uh, but I think you need to make them aware of situations officially with a letter and a copy of the report, so.
Now, emergency money, is that in the event that you, you just need a front safe and we have to do something quickly?
Right.
And what is a typical, uh, method of resolution there? Is that like modulars or something?
Modular, immediately, immediate resolution would, would be modulars. Uh, I know that, uh, Wayne County did that, and they had that sinkhole here around the, uh, CKL National, so I knew they, they worked with the SBA on that, and that was, they put modulars in over a period of months.
Miss Mickey, what are you thinking, that you would just make the SBA aware of the situation and suggest potential options that they might make available to us?
Yes, well, that's exactly what I'm thinking, so I think that's something that we did, include in the letter, you know, possibility that maybe we could use emergency funding down there, as well as other funding sources that may be available to us, um, to address that long-term.
But I don't want you to make that a part of your, the next year plan, which starts potentially, I think, to start the planning for that, I think they want us, everybody to start thinking.
So the time could be a little bit.
Now, for that part of, is that for the long-range plan?
Yes.
Not the emergency necessarily?
No, that's a long-range plan, but he, every county has them up for the ten-year plan, right?
In doing so, are we kind of leaning towards the Vegas one economy, we're probably not going to be there? And I don't have one that thinks to be a ten-year?
Well, I, I don't either, I, I think, I think if, but I think if you make them aware that, that you've got an issue here, and, and working on their side of the, of the table, they're going to say, well, then you need to make it part of your ten-year plan when you think you would like to replace that building, or what's your best, is that your top priority, is there another school that's top priority? That's how well we're going.
Then how we would choose to do that, we would share with them.
Right.
I think, is that what you were thinking? Is it the desire of the board, that you could do that, share with the SBA that information? I know you're good at all those SBA functions, so you take it there.
I'll be there.
If they have any questions, I'll be there. All right, anybody have anything else, anything else you'd like to share with your band? Appreciate you all coming down here tonight.
Thanks for being.
We're, we're on behalf of the staff.
Very good.
Okay, thanks for your work, and if you may ask some, uh, more questions later on, thank you very much.
We're always grateful.
Okay. All right, everybody's, uh, Jeff said there, I, I know that we got the report, and I started to look at the data and some of the, and begin the monitoring and various testing, and I said, man, that, that long ago we did this, and, uh, so it's been a while that, uh, we've been monitoring things there, because obviously, student safety is our utmost concern, uh, at the same time, we have to, uh, play that school. Bill, we know what it's like, you don't have to play it, don't, you have to deal with that, the emergency contingency plan, I guess, but, uh, this is something the board is certainly aware of, we discussed it among ourselves many, many times, uh, and we continue to do so. Uh, I guess now we've reached the more formal stage, you know, we, uh, we were doing the monitoring, and we did the structural part, and then we did the, uh, where they came in, did the core drilling and all, and got, and we found out more information. So now we're at the point of making that known to the school building authority, so that should something occur, or should we want to take some, uh, plans for the future for some changes in some manner, uh, that they're aware of, and hopefully we'll be able to get some money sometime, so, uh, we just have to keep monitoring more of the ready-to-use. Okay, if not, uh, anything else on that, then let's go and do the administrative part of our chairs. I have a motion for that. Ms. Mary, and Mr. Wilkinson seconded that. Jeff, Mickey.
I'd make school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus shackles, athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B is a designation of Angela York as signatory for all E-RAC bodies effective immediately. Item C, Marshall University students, Jellicoe Kelly and Summer Burnham, to complete social work field experience at Oak County High School starting the end of January two thousand and nineteen. Item D, contract with Palmeroy Gethronics to install VOIP dufo system at Big Way Elementary and with DKA, agreed to the term that we agreed to attach.
Thank you, Mr. Gaz, you mentioned that system before. Anybody have any questions, I need to be logged in. If not, is that an all yes on the administrative items? Yeah, all yes. All right, let's go to the finance section, if you'd please have a motion, look at those. Carol? Second, second one. Greg?
Scheduled invoices told at seven hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred forty dollars in eighty-nine cents, which is attached in there as always. Questions or something?
Cash flow's still good, like?
When I left the office, it wasn't.
Well, that's something that, all right, if no one has any questions, that long yes on the finance?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to the personnel section then. Brad, Jeff, Mary, Bill?
Okay, I made a part of short-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment professional personnel pending issuance of first class permit. Item C, employment professional personnel pending return of regular employee. Item D, employment professional personnel pending issuance of an alternative certification. E, employment of substitute service personnel. F, employment of critical personnel. G, leave of absence. H, resignations slash retirements. And also at the bottom, where it says revise the effective date of Tommy Shortridge to November twenty-sixth, we change that to November thirteenth, because she's coming already.
This is getting close, but?
November thirteenth, we'll be changing that. And on our, and on our handout, I think I gave you, we've got some more positions filled, uh, it's going to be the West Apple Principal Position, we've had four applicants, we had, uh, three in county and one out of county, and we plan on conducting those interviews next Tuesday, uh, three out of, one of them will be there, so we're going to have the other one on Thursday, so we're hopefully bringing, uh, give those, that information to Mr. Mickey, so he can bring that in the same duty at the twenty-seventh agenda.
How many did you have on that?
Four, three in county and one out. Okay, uh, also, uh, with the, uh, the grant we got for, where we hired a social worker comprehensive, the school improvement grant, uh, the school's also one of the DIS Technology Integration Specialists, it would be one, and they would rotate from school, the school is set up a schedule where they would go to work, so we will be bringing that, we already have a job description, so we'll be bringing that to the next meeting for group of staff.
What does that person do, Bill?
They, they're a T, uh, Technology Integration Specialist, they go in classrooms, show teachers how to use technology, incorporate technology in the instruction, and, and what.
Is that a two-hundred-day?
Yes, it's a two-hundred-day, yes, sir.
All right, anybody have anything else in personnel?
Yeah, so, no, with the social workers, we've, uh, we knew that we'd have a lot of applicants, we've had nine applicants reported to the hospital, so there's some good applicants there, so.
Are those people, uh, a big degree people?
Yes.
In, in social work?
Yes, sir.
So they don't necessarily have to have an educational certification, they're real in social work?
Yes.
It's a name implies?
That's name implies, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, do you have any others? If not, is that an all yes on personnel items?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we're down to the comments and concerns, anybody have any? Mike, anybody have any? Mr. Mickey, no folks in the association? When you travel, you don't carry them out here? Not normally, anyway. Brownie, we hope you make it home safely. Brownie's on the commute, so we don't have to hear the, uh, airport traffic, so, but he's still there with the time. There he is, Sean, he knows, he approved him to Sean, we're here, we're here to speak. Okay, listen, adjourned until Tuesday, November the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, at one o'clock this time in Hamlin. Have a motion? Carol made a motion, Fred seconded that, is that an all yes?
Yes.
All yes. This being adjourned, thanks everyone.